The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Freedom.
Roll call will show that all commissioners are present. Board members in front of you, we have the agenda. Are there any corrections, changes, additions? Dr. Williams, do you have anything additional?
No additions.
Okay. If not, we'll look for a motion to approve.
I'd move that.
Okay. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Natch, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item we have is consent agenda. Board members on the consent agenda, you have items one through eighteen. If there are any of those items that you'd like to pull, we can do so and approve those that want to remain on that. Are there any items that would like to be pulled from the agenda? Any items that would like to be pulled?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Okay. I've got a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
And a second? Any other discussion on that? If not, we'll approve all eighteen of those items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Continue to move on. I gotta pass over those eighteen items and get to public works.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jody Teich, County Engineer. My first item today begins on page one seventeen of your agenda packet. And I'm asking the board to conduct a public hearing to consider modification of the transportation sales tax project list. That project list is included in your packets on page one twenty as an attachment to the resolution that at the end of the public hearing, I'll ask the board to adopt. So just a little background information, as you're probably aware, the board extended the quarter percent local option transportation sales tax to December thirty first of 2027, this past August. As we looked at the revenues and budgeting for 2024, in order to accomplish County Road one fifty seven, we wanted to add that as a sales tax project list. When we went through the road program and examined the projects compared to the revenues, we actually, last year, got about eight point four million dollars in transportation sales tax funding with that quarter percent. So we believe we can add this project in without removing any of the other sales tax projects. We advertised for two consecutive weeks in the Cold Spring Record, and I have not received any comments to date on this.
Okay. Any questions for Jody on that?
Mr. Chairman, Jody, just explain the process of how we get to the revised list. Like, was there an original list? And then explain that process a little bit.
So the original list is virtually identical to the list that is in your agenda packet with the exception that we added County Road one fifty seven. So the sales tax can be spent on engineering and right-of-way and legal costs for those projects that are listed as sales tax funded projects. So anything associated with the cost of that capital improvement. So as we went through and examined those expenditures that we expect to have on each of the projects, like I said, all we did was added County Road one fifty seven to those list of sales tax funded projects. The road program and putting it together, it's more or less a math formula. I know it's a very engineer thing to say, but county-state aid highway funding can only be spent on county-state aid highway funds. Wheelage tax, sales tax, and levy can be spent on any of our roads. And so trying to put that puzzle together, County Road one fifty seven, of course, is eligible only for wheelage, sales tax, or levy. And so the reason we wanted to include that as a sales tax project in addition to the added revenues that we weren't expecting is that we did not want to see a significant spike in the county levy portion of our construction program.
Thank you.
Okay. Jody, I appreciate the flexibility we have even working around these guidelines because I know sometimes the language has to be very specific, and yet we can do things appropriately to maximize those dollars. So thank you for that work. And, of course, I don't know how many folks have realized the projects we have been able to accomplish with that quarter percent, but it's been a good thing for our highways. So I appreciate that. Any other questions for Jody? If not, I'll go ahead and move that resolution. I will need a motion.
Actually, we need to open the public hearing.
Oh, yeah. Well, if somebody wants to speak about it, let's have it. I'll open that public hearing.
Some of the delays, some of the delays that have been caused, especially last year, was material shortages, especially on the petroleum-related. And my neighborhood right now is impacted by that. It was supposed to happen last year. It's happening this year, and it's a two-year deal. So sometimes it has nothing to do with us. It has to do with the balance of the market. But this is a public hearing, so I'll shut up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone who wishes to speak?
For shutting up for the information?
For shutting up. Anyone else wishing to speak, other than Commissioner Lenzmeyer? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Now, you can have the floor again.
No, I've had it.
Okay.
Yeah, I got, I got my point across.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Jody can verify this or not, but I think we provide great detail in our, in our plan that gets approved for the local, local option sales tax. I think there's some counties that have a much more general, generalized plan that doesn't get as specific as we. So we're very transparent with how we're spending those sales tax dollars.
Absolutely. I have some colleagues who they list their entire road program. Some reference their long-term transportation plan. And I think it was the wishes of the county board and certainly our department that we are much more transparent in exactly what we want to do so we can show the public what they're getting for their tax dollars.
No, I agree, and I appreciate that because these would be additional dollars that we otherwise would be receiving from the state or else actually levying for. And so these specific dollars should be, you know, noted for those projects. So thank you.
This is especially important for counties that have a significant metropolitan or city in their borders. So some effort and coordination has to happen.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Natch with the motion?
Second.
Commissioner Clark with the second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
So my next item, given that you approved the list of projects for the sales tax, is on page one twenty-two, and I'm asking the board to approve our 2024 to 2025 five-year road improvement program. As you're aware, we had the public informational meeting with not very large attendance on May second. We had a road tour on May eighth. I get comments throughout the year, and I try to incorporate those into our program as much as we possibly can within budget constraints. I have not, since we opened up the draft, for comments from the public. I've not received any specific comments on our draft road program. But again, this is, it is a living document that we update once a year if projects get pushed back. As Commissioner Lenzmeyer alluded to, sometimes we're dealing with materials delays. Sometimes it's just a matter of workforce to get these projects delivered. So the road program begins on page one twenty-three of your packet. And on page one twenty-eight, there's a map of the overall projects. So again, in conjunction with the budget process, I'm asking the board to approve the five-year road improvement program.
Mr. Chair. Jody, just a quick question. On that County Road twelve bridge replacement over Yetzel Creek, is that going to be after the road is?
We would like to actually do that at the same time as the road project so that we have better transitions in that area. Sometimes if we do the resurfacing project ahead of time or afterwards, those transitions aren't as smooth. And so if we do it in conjunction with the road project, then we can have an overall better final product.
Oh, yeah, I see now. There's half fourteen and thirty-one's above it, so it's going the same, same timeframe.
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay. Other questions for Jody?
Mr. Chairman, Jody, is that common that you don't receive comments from the public on the five-year road plan, like in the past?
Well, and like I said, we get projects throughout the year, or comments throughout the year, excuse me, from people who ask if their road is planned for improvement or just in general complaints. We get comments about safety issues on the roads, and so we collect those throughout the year. So if I didn't get any comments for the year, I would be concerned that nobody's looking at it. But certainly, I think what, I'm assuming what goes through people's minds is they've already contacted me. If they can see it's in the program, they know we're trying to address it. They call just to verify. But again, those happen throughout the year and not just during the time period that we're, we've got the draft program out on the website.
And Mr. Chairman, that, I mean, that makes me feel good because there's ongoing interaction. And then you and I talked about two suggestions, is one to have the plan available at the township by annual meeting because townships are probably the most affected by it. And then also to the Stearns County cities, again, they'd be secondary most affected. But the more input you can get, obviously, I would assume the better end product you have, so.
And quite honestly, the projects within cities, oftentimes the city is the spark to that project being included in the road program, or we have those discussions because they want to time any utility replacement or upgrades with that as well.
So the open communication, Mr. Chairman, is great, and you're doing that. But if we can build on that, that's great, too.
And Commissioner, what you'll sometimes find is, is that we already have the crystal ball established, and people will call you, well, this road's in bad shape. It needs to get done. You can say, we know that. It's two years out, or it's three years out. And, yeah, and those things will be coming at you. And it's nice to see that, you know, we have people that are on, on board and aware of having a good five-year plan. And again, it's not written in stone. It's not written in pudding, maybe wet concrete, I guess. So, Commissioner Clark?
Yes, and for the public, I mean, could you just speak to the communications with the cities about maintenance agreements, too? Because obviously, on our road tour, we went on Veterans Drive, which has some rough spots, among others. So if you could just talk a little bit about that.
So we have agreements, joint powers agreements, cooperative agreements, maybe is a better term, with cities throughout the county that they do maintenance on certain stretches of our road. And the primary push behind that was snow and ice removal because especially in smaller towns, that main draw, you know, main road through town, those city staff will get to it oftentimes much more quickly than county staff would get to. And so we pay them per lane mile price every year to do that. And that's based on a three-year running average of what we spend on our maintenance. So in addition to the snow and ice control, it's supposed to include crack sealing, pothole patching, tree limb issues, debris removal. There's several items on that, street sweeping. But so, in my opinion, the most important thing you can do to extend the life of that pavement is to make sure that the cracks stay sealed. And in some cases, where we're not seeing the crack sealing program that the county might have, those potholes show up much sooner than we would expect that they normally would. And so we are going to be having discussions this summer, which I guess summer starts tomorrow, with these cities just to have a little bit more discussion on these maintenance agreements to make sure that everybody is getting what they should be getting out of it. And that may include also discussions on what we're paying. And again, it's a three-year running average. So for instance, this past winter was a really bad winter. I don't think I need to tell anybody that. I don't, didn't think it would ever end. So they probably spent more, whereas our three-year running average has some lower-cost years in there. However, in the future, when we have some lower-cost winters, this high-cost winter will be calculated into that price, and so there'll be money ahead. But we figure a three-year running average, rather than kind of chasing what we have been paying, makes more sense.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions about the five-year plan? And this, is looking for a resolution or a passage on that approval?
Yep, just an approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that plan.
Okay. Commissioner Bertram with the motion?
Second.
Commissioner Natch, second. Any other discussion on it? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
So under miscellaneous items, we did get approval to award a contract last Friday morning. As you may recall, at your last board meeting, the board authorized the auditor, treasurer, and the administrator to award contracts for two federal contracts for which we were waiting on approval. We have gotten the approval and did reach out to the auditor's office and administration last Friday. So I handed out something before the board meeting. It's an abstract summary I did label as C three. So I just want the board to acknowledge the award of SP zero seven three dash zero seven zero dash zero two five, and that's the roundabout at County Roads four and one thirty-three. The low bid was RL Larson Excavating of St. Cloud. They were one point four eight percent under the engineer's estimate. Again, this is a federal project, and actually, we are expecting, assuming we have our contracts and bonds back early this week, work will start on next Monday.
And Mr. Chair, and Jody, for, for the public, can you say where, where that is? I think for some people, they don't go by road, so whereabouts is it in our?
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. I speak county road number. County Road four and one thirty-three is a few miles northwest of St. Cloud. Veterans Drive heads northwesterly towards St. Wendell and is the first four-way stop as you're heading northwest out of St. Cloud. And then County Road one thirty-three runs between St. Joseph and Sartell. So it is a major intersection with a lot of traffic. That's had some crash issues in the past. And so this will be funded with Highway Safety Improvement Program funding and county-state aid highway funding.
I was just gonna add, and people are a little bit confused. It's kind of like Lake Wabagon in that that's where Five Points is located, but there's no real town called Five Points, but that is the location.
Right. And Mr. Chair, I thank you for doing that. I think a lot of times people aren't paying, don't always pay attention to which county road I'm on. So that's helpful, and it is an area that I know at least a couple of us hear about quite a bit. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there's always swings, but boy, this is the biggest one. Thank goodness it's under estimate, but I don't know that I've ever seen a swing from one percent under to thirty percent over. I mean, obviously, it doesn't matter because we're taking a low bid, but it's kind of interesting that that swing is that wide to me.
In some cases, contractors bid it where they've got a lot of work, and if they get it, it's going to be all money, and they have to put in the overtime and have to get in extra crews. And so they bid it to see if they get it, and if they do, it's certainly a profit for them. Generally, we're a little bit more concerned if there's a huge swing between the low bidder and everyone else, but they're kind of spread out. Those top three bidders are within the ballpark generally, so.
Yeah, the bidding process is driven by more factors than just the county considerations. It depends upon, for some of these bids, well, for all of these bids, what are the business conditions of that bidder at the time? If they're starving, we get low bids. If, if they're not, they get high bids, and their attitude is, what the hell? We get to bid, and we bid it high, we'll still figure out a way to get it done. But, yeah, there's other factors in our need, and whether it's over or under our estimate. In a time like this, the same factors that impact our union negotiations also impact our bidding and what's going on in the general economy. High inflation impacts, for example, especially for petroleum products. So it's other factors than just what we see right in front of us from the business side. That's where your private sector background comes in handy.
Mr. Chair, I'll move adoption.
Okay. Was, do we, do you want adoption on that, or?
I, I'd like an official motion.
Motion by Commissioner Clark?
Second.
Commissioner Bertram? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Jody.
So I have nothing else unless the floor?
Okay. Since we're on that intersection, I'm just curious, the, what's going to be the closure, then, on that approximately?
How long?
No, what would be the start? When would the closure start?
So it will start, like I said, next Monday.
Next Monday.
And it, the contract time is eight weeks, but we do have an early completion incentive if they can complete it two weeks early. That runs about the same time, if any of you recall, when the County Road one thirty-eight and Twenty-Eighth Avenue Roundabout went in just north of our office.
Okay.
It's about the same timeline, where if they can complete it in six weeks, then they get an early completion incentive.
Okay, good. And then, going between Five Points and Sartell, Nineteenth and Sixty-Fifth, Sixty-Fifth is under construction now. That will not be finished, completed soon?
It will not. That project was originally slated to go last year and be done, but because of supply chain issues with a utility pipe, they were not able to do the whole thing. They were only able to do half of it. So I think they should finish that before we are done with our construction. But our detour will run along Pine Cone Road, County Road one twenty, down Veterans Drive, and kind of cut over to County Road seventy-five, and all the way around County Road two that comes in from the north.
Yes.
So it's a lengthy detour, certainly. And then we are working with area townships to help assure that they will not see a significant amount of increase, especially heavy traffic that would be using that road.
Okay. All right. And then I just had one other thing I was gonna mention to you before the meeting. I did get a phone call, there's a, on County Road four, out by four and one twenty, there's a private development doing a little bit of construction or something. Somebody is, is concerned that they might be in the right-of-way, so that might be worth just checking out.
We'll take a look at that. Thank you.
All right. Anything else for Jody?
Mr. Chairman, Jody, I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting what the consent agenda items that we did to 2024 because of the federal funds. Again, just for the public standpoint, you want to just talk about that a little bit? Why we do that?
So we have two projects on the consent agenda for which we had advanced construction agreements because we have federal funding over a few different years. And the first year that that federal funding, the first round of federal funding is available in 2023, but rounds two and three of the fed, overall federal funding don't come until federal fiscal year twenty-four or federal fiscal year twenty-five. And so basically, the county signs that agreement acknowledging that we're not getting all of our federal money right away, and that as soon as it's available, but at the latest, those federal fiscal years, that's when we would get reimbursed. So the county will cash flow those projects. But so the example with the County Road seventy-five bridge, we got a congressional, congressionally delegated funding. So that was available in federal fiscal year 2023. And so the project had to have a letting this year. Then we were also able to secure federal formula funds through the St. Cloud APO for a larger amount of that bridge. And so those funds won't be available until twenty-four and twenty-five. The example of the County Road seventy-five or Second Street South resurfacing, we get National Highway System funding because County Road seventy-five is a principal arterial. So we get between six and seven hundred thousand dollars per year. To do a project on County Road seventy-five, generally, we need to lump a few of those years together. And so that first round of funding is designated in federal fiscal year 2023, with the next two years, those allotments also going toward that project because the project is roughly three million dollars, a little bit over that. So we need to, again, guarantee that, yes, we will cash flow this, and we know we're going to get reimbursed at a later date. And the federal fiscal year, as a reminder, runs from October first to September thirtieth. So it's not the calendar years, it's the federal fiscal years.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for that explanation. And while you're explaining, okay, I've got another, that's the, the resources and the way they're coming in. And then just basically on, on a payment on the construction plan, how much is usually put out when, when, when a project is started during the project and then to finish upon completion? What do contractors usually need upfront when?
So our contracts are set up that as they perform the work, we pay them, minimum of once every thirty days. And if a contractor has to order in advance and pay for a significant amount of materials upfront, they can do a request for a material-on-hand payment. So we get invoices from the contractor, and we can do those material-on-hand payments. But other than that, generally, our first payment goes out thirty days after construction starts and once a month thereafter. Obviously, with minimal work being done over the winter, that's when we have the lag in payments. And then we hold on, we only pay ninety-five percent of the work certified, and then that five percent is reserved to get in that final paperwork that we need from the contractor, proof of taxes paid. On a federal project, there is disadvantaged business enterprise paperwork, and we need to make sure we have all of that. Also, certified payrolls, those are some examples, and we need to make sure we have all of that before we pay out the final payment on the contract.
And usually, the holdback is a fairly routine process, but it has in the past gotten contentious over disagreements with the contractor and our technical specs, et cetera. Well, there's a variety of reasons why that would happen, but, yep, they gotta, there's gotta be an agreement before they get the rest of that last five percent.
Mr. Chairman, I think you're gonna give her the award after the meeting for having the most items on an agenda, so.
It's that time of year, so.
All right. Anything else for Jody before we release her to go to real work?
Early summer, you know?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
It's the season.
We'll move on to the next item, environmental services. Shelley, you're on.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. We have one item in front of you for today, and Becky Schlorf is here to present that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Becky Schlorf, Division Manager, Division Supervisor. The item before you is to approve the Aquatic Invasive Species Plan revisions. The plan seeks to curb and prevent the spread of AIS, aquatic invasive species, in Stearns County. So the plan and the budget focus on the following key areas: program management, education and awareness, inspection and decontamination, population assessment and management, AIS response planning, and enforcement and risk reduction opportunities. The plan that is before you has been before the Aquatic Invasive Species Committee. It is made up of several Lake Association members, a Watershed District member, and staff. The most significant changes to the plan are on, let's see, packet page one forty-six, which is section D, relating to the, how the remaining funds from the RFP process are handled. Currently in the plan, each of these program areas, as I mentioned, have specific percentage of the dollars allocated, and through the local RFP process, those are not to be exceeded. The plan amendment before you, or plan revision, would allow, if there are remaining funds, that some of those may be shifted to another program area where there's not enough funds. And then the other significant change is to section And then the other significant change is to section F, which would be on packet page 151, and this is revising the plan goals and strategies to better match the existing program structure. I'm not going to go through and read each of those, I guess, unless you would prefer me to. And then also to note, as some background, like Stearns County receives approximately $250,000 annually for this program. And then, as I was mentioning, most of those funds are allocated through our local RFP process, and most of those funds are for inspections. And so I'm just looking for approval on this.
Mr. Chair. I'll make that motion, knowing that we're going to probably have more conversation than I have a comment to.
Okay. And a second by Commissioner Lenzmeyer with the nod to the head.
I can do that.
All right. Now let's have discussion.
Yeah, Becky, I members, I think most, most people are probably aware of this, but maybe because we don't talk about all the often, we are a little unique compared to a lot of counties in a really positive way. We've got an incredibly active group of people from a wide array of lake associations who actively both participate in a number of our our needs. But boy, they become like mini experts and then they really do go back and communicate. I'm saying this out loud in part two for you, Jeff. We got rid of having a commissioner be represented on the awards panel, but until this last year I was doing it and people can go sit in because they spend, wow, what, eight hours a lot of times just going through and trying to figure out how to do. So when we talk about our partnerships, our partnerships with those lake associations are amazing. And there were a few foibles or issues going on, and it sounds like they've agreed that this corrects those challenges. Would that be accurate?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark. The committee also has a newer subcommittee now looking at the RFP process itself and the scoring. So that is still in the works, but yes, they work really well together.
Mr. Chairman, having as many lakes as I do in my district, it's amazing. I attended many of the lake associations have asked me to attend their meetings and just the participation of how many members they have. One of the lake associations has over 80% of the lake residents as members. The average, I guess, statewide is maybe 40. So just kudos to the lake associations themselves beyond this issue on a host of issues, how active they are and how engaged they are and how many members they have. And I joined a lot of them just to show again the support of the county, local lake association level, state. And if we can continue to be a connection for them, that that's great. And obviously, we can't do this alone. We have to do it all together, and we're doing a good job of doing that, so.
Other comments? If not, I'll call the question.
What do you need a second? Sorry, Mr.
I got one to think.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry. See, I got very dead for a second.
He gave us a nod.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, real quick, this is one of those interesting areas where for some of us who don't have any lakes, unless you count Lake George and their their districts, I've got a number of constituents that also are part of, they own like property. It's nothing like what either Jeff or Steve have, but it's an interesting thing about who we might hear back from.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I have no additional.
Shelley, we've got issues by Commissioner and then we're going to close the meeting, but I have just a concern. I had an email yesterday from one of the people out in St. Joe about concern about noise level from coming from Milk and Honey.
I did receive that information and I did forward it to Chad May, who is here. We will be having a conversation related to that, and we will also request the noise monitoring information from Milk and Honey. The last time we had that situation, we requested that information as well.
Yeah, because we had that agreement and yeah, we we should be following up on that. I appreciate that.
Yep, we do get that information as requested. Thank you.
Okay.
So what what are we gonna? What information are we going to hear about this?
Essentially, what we did is took a look at the the information that came in from the concerned citizen. We requested the information from Milk and Honey. We looked at what they had, and they were in compliance with the decibels. And at for that previous event, this is a new event, so we will have a different conversation about that. So we essentially, if we don't have a violation, we just move forward. And if this is a violation, then we will address that violation.
So there is some measurement?
Yes.
You talked about decibels?
Correct.
I'd also like to see the data on the decibel that has some proximity to a freeway, right?
Yes, they are very close to the freeway as well.
Why don't we get, let's get a reading there. I'd like to contrast and compare. What are they living with? What before Milk and Honey? And then from Milk and Honey, we'll have that data too. It might be an issue where neighbors approve certain noise levels, but not certain others, and it has nothing to do or very little to do with actual operation. Of course, that's never been done. People just don't bring up disassociated activities with a neighbor who they don't particularly have a a positive relationship with.
We'll take a look at that as well.
That'd be very unlike Stearns County.
Mr. Chairman, we've all gotten emails and from a host of folks. But part of my confusion is, I was on a planning commission when we approved this. What confuses me is that I remember being very specific with the number of events, the parking for that reason. We heard from the neighbors then and we were very specific. And I'm not going to go back and look at the details, or at least I'd rather not, but I thought we were very specific in events and parking, you know, that we couldn't overdo the parking on grass areas and things like that, just like we made chadys at the golf course in Gold Spring. We made them pay pave a parking lot, you know, that kind of stuff. So we were very specific for all that reason, and yet I keep hearing things that it's going over the events, it's going over the parking, the noise levels are going over. And then in the most recent email that we all got, it said that the county doesn't enforce or he was told that the county can't enforce the noise ordinance. I would assume we're the ones that enforce that, don't we? And how do we enforce it?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, we have the the condition is to meet the state noise standard. So we have had set up monitoring, the specific business set up monitoring locations in specific areas so that we could take the readings at different locations to make sure that it was in compliance at the property line, which is the requirement. So if it's out of that area, then outside of that for compliance, we would address that with with that applicant. But at this point, we haven't had any in excess of that events, and they are all in compliance with the number of events and their schedule for things inside their general operation hours and then those things that are outside of their operation hours. So the permit has some complexity to it related to hours of operation. And I think there's some of the neighbors have a differing opinion on hours of operation and special events.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, Shelley, I don't think it's just the neighbors. I think I know Joe and I do, and we were both on a planning commission, but we specifically said so many events. And then I remember the applicant asking, well, what would that? Would that be weddings? Would that be? And we said anything. It could be four weddings and four tastings or be whatever different styles of events we would have. And then we talked a lot about parking in the St. Ben's Parking Overflow Lot and then having busing and evidently, none of that's happening. And again, I'm only hearing this secondhand. I'm never there, I don't know. But it just seems to be normally when when we do the conditions and everything on something that's pretty black and white, it's this, this, this. And for some reason, this has just continued to be confusing to a lot of people, including me, when I'm hearing these secondhand things so that. And then the noise thing, what he said in the email yesterday was, when they do the monitoring, evidently, there's a state standard of it's supposed to be three feet high and all that stuff. And he's saying that the monitoring is being done differently. And again, I don't know that's the case. However, you know, that it's it's laid on the ground versus three feet up in the air where the microphone or whatever the sensor is that's supposed to be receiving it. But when you say we talked to the applicant on the noise ordinance, who's we? Environmental Services? Because unfortunately, from what I'm understanding is, the sheriff's office gets called.
Yes, they do.
Then they respond. And then what's that process? So that is that the way it's supposed to go? So the noise, they believe, or they're doing it with their own devices, they're saying it's over the level, then they call the sheriff's office, then the deputies show up, and then what happens from there?
Well, that I don't remember all of the detail too, but I know we did work out a process with the sheriff's office and talked about that, making sure that we went to the site after, once we received the complaint. I think what we'll do is we'll go out and take another look at where they said they were placing their monitors. It's my understanding that they were in compliance with the requirement previously. We will have another look at that and see if there's anything that needs to be adjusted. And then we will also check in with the sheriff's department to see what has occurred. So that's all I have at the moment.
I feel sorry for the deputies, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
If they show up, do they know what they're supposed to do and what can they do? Or is it in Environmental Services where they take the report, they go on scene, they get what they get, then they turn it over to Environmental Services and then Environmental Services, whatever that process is, it might be good for everybody to understand.
I will verify that and bring that back to you, the process.
And Mr. Chair. Thank you. I too get confused about this as well, so I won't repeat things that have just been said. I think one of the things for me that can be a little tricky is, when are they doing their regular business of having people out there that they have, they're able to go do? And when does it turn into an event? What's the difference? And what's the difference in the noise between those? And during COVID, they had asked for permission, you know, they wanted to have up to 1,000 people and we said no. And I know there's been some changes in this over time, so I think if we can get better information, it's helpful to us to know the difference between it seeming loud to somebody and them violating it. And I have to admit, as somebody who struggles sometimes if somebody's very loud near me, I get it. I mean, I feel for those neighbors, so it'd be helpful for us.
And and there's been concerns on the township side as well, because what what they were looking at and what they thought they were approving is not what actually taken place, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's successful.
Yeah.
Right, people like it. So that's that makes it even more challenging.
And it ties up, well, my my gripe on the on the continued complaint is it ties up sheriff's personnel. And it sounds like sitting there would be the most boring duty on the planet. And I feel for our our folks that in essence are assigned to do nothing because there's not an actionable, an actual actionable cause out there. So it's frustrating for me too.
And Mr. Chairman, it's really no nothing different than what we deal with all the time with sand pits. You know, a sand pit in Crow River Township, you never hear a complaint. And if you had a sand pit by Gold Spring or Rockville, you hear a lot of complaints. And so when we approve those permits, hearing from the public, we intentionally put additional conditions on the permit to make sure that we're being proactive, which is what we're supposed to be doing, to prevent that. And so we definitely heard from the public before this was granted, and we definitely put conditions in place. I remember it, you know, very well. And unfortunately, that's not working. And I think it it may not be working because we're not enforcing for both purposes. I mean, for both sides. I mean, it's taking time from Milk and Honey too that we hopefully can get beyond.
Yeah.
It may not be working because of personalities, and I don't know what we can do about that. Nothing.
My my point was at the beginning is that I think there was a compromise contractually or verbally that there was going to be 12 events. Well, no, it's it's that's not 12 events, but there's things happening basically every weekend out there.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Clark's point is, what's an event? And I thought we explained that, but maybe we didn't. But maybe what we should do, even though I'd rather not, but I'd like to see that process when they came before the planning commission and what the planning commission recommended and what the board approved, which is the same. Maybe that would be helpful if you shared it with all of us and we can go through it ourselves that we'd understand that. What the application was, the minutes, you know, that'll refresh everyone's memory, even though Joe and I were there, it'll refresh our memory and then, of course, bring everybody up to speed. So if you could share that, that might be helpful.
And for me, there might be some other communications because, in all honesty, I didn't think that that any of that actually changed what ends up being a regular night that might be something we'd see at Jules Bistro or something. You know, if you've got a smaller gathering, that doesn't count as one of the 12 because we did talk about that, and I doubt our minutes actually reflect much of that. So but so that's where I get, that's why I said I get confused. Certainly, it's great to relook at it. We also know they're one of the entities that some some of their business models change over time. And, you know, what we're really talking about is a balance of interests here and how do we how do we not get in the middle of personalities, as Lee was just talking about, but we're also being able to.
Regulation doesn't always trump common sense.
The analogy, Mr. Chairman, I used a lot on planning commission is, years ago in my life, when I was younger, if the neighbor's dog was barking, the neighbor would walk across the backyard and say hi to the neighbor that they knew very well and said, Bob, you know your dog's barking. And Bob would say, I know, we got to do something about that. And they'd laugh and shake hands and all the way they went. Today, they don't do that. They call the city police, they call the county sheriff. Well, a county sheriff deputy or a police department's not going to solve that issue, number one. Number two, it'll only heighten the tension between the neighbors. And that's unfortunately, kind of where we're at now. So it is, I think it always is on the applicant or the person that has a conditional to do whatever they can do to minimize that before it gets here because we're not going to solve it either, for either one of them, I think. But again, I think we know where we're at.
Send out a psychologist.
But again, when you have these CUPs or I conditional use permits, usually you're you you say what you're actually going to do. Using your example, if you say, I'm going to have a pet, well, and we say, okay, you can have a pet, well, we don't know if it's going to be a garter snake or an elephant. It's a pet. So it's better if we have clarity when we start these things. So I think we can move on.
Thank you.
God, I hope so.
All right. We have a break planned, but we actually, for those that are listening, let's do issues by Commissioner, and then we're actually going to go to a closed session and then come back after that closed session. So let's go ahead and go with issues by Commissioner first. Commissioner Noddy, do you have anything?
I do not have much. I did go to groundbreaking at the Stearns County Fair for their new facilities that are going up, which they did send me some pictures. They have the steel is on, so they're charging at it. They're going to have it ready by the fairtime.
Has the round building been removed?
Not that I know of yet.
Okay.
You might have hope for one more season.
Okay. Commissioner Clark?
I don't have much either. I suppose, given the ozone particulates, not the regular particulate issue today, but it's ozone related and so just people taking care because we got a lot of great festivals and community events that are going on, but this is a hard time for a number of people and the drought and watching the fire dangers. So everybody just both have a good time, but be careful.
Okay. Which Commissioner Lenzmeyer will come back towards the middle.
Okay. County Fair related, there's a sign up sheet in in the back here for staffing commissioners' staff various times of the county fair. And I signed up already. And I think it's a great opportunity for FaceTime, so I remind you of that. And relative to my political advantage, the county fair is as far away from my district as it's humanly possible, but I still have a pretty good time doing that.
Mr. Chairman, with Commissioner Lenzmeyer saying that, I I know I told you back in the day and I wouldn't expect you to remember, but it's got to be 20 years ago, I was driving the Sox Center for something totally unrelated to the fair, and you were in front of me because you had that distinctive little truck that you drove. And I thought, what in the world is Lee Lenzmeyer turning off the Sox Center for? And it took me a while to graduate. I thought, oh, he's going to the fair, so you do go. I I've seen you there. Randy, just real quickly, I mentioned this before the meeting, I consented Gen 11, the bond, which we've talked about, I brought up a couple of times because, again, I'm still in disbelief and I'm very impressed that we are debt free by that action and we were saving close to 450,000 or whatever. So again, just for the So again, just for the public standpoint, just touch on whatever you feel is legitimate. I think it deserves a little bit of attention.
Sure. This is the last bond the county levies for. So we still have a, a bond or two for like ditches that are paid for by special assessments, but this is the one that we actually levy. So this, it's basically correct. We would be debt free after this. And, and actually, interest rates going up is why we're doing the defeasance. And so we're able to capture the interest on the arbitrage. So the IRS only allows you to invest and make so much money.
Yep.
On, on bonds, when you have the proceeds. This would actually help us capture interest savings in the future and in the past. With the rates going up, it's kind of the prime time to do this, so.
Yep. But Mr. Chairman, I think it's a credit to your department and to you for managing it as well as you have. This isn't a one-year deal. This is a 20-year deal that you've managed. And even the way the transfers are when we approve the vouchers, and again, some people might not think that we go through the vouchers. I know we all do. We look at those, we ask questions before the meeting. And then also your wire transfers, that you're gaining as much interest in investments as you can and then transferring. All that is all happening with a very huge budget, but I think a lot of people don't understand that. And so to your credit.
Yeah. And I just want to make sure, you know, we recognize the current administrator and past administrator, all these, you know, how to do the bonding and the projects, that's part of the budget committee and a whole team effort, so.
Good. And the, of course, parades started. Sheriff Soika and I represented Stearns County well at the Panzil Parade. He's got a very unique car, if you haven't seen it. But the presence certainly helps people understand that there is a connection with the communities and sheriff's office and in my district, in my case, you know, I do it. And then the church festivals and lake associations. And again, the communication of whatever, if we develop respect and interaction with the county residents, the chances we're going to be able to interact more positively with them on things we're going to need coming up is great. So certainly, it's good to see that the county is represented at the fair and at these community events and throughout the county. That's important, I think. So that's all I got.
Okay. Surprisingly, I don't have anything which is unusual. However, I will comment about the county fair. You know, it's an event that I've always looked forward to, and I think that most of the commissioners do. And unfortunately, last year was the first year that we did not get a complimentary piece of pie from the 4H. And I fell shorted on that, but I don't know if, if we got called out on that as a perk or what it is. But those are, that are an extension, if, if we could somehow get that piece of pie back. The blueberry was exceptional. So that's all I've got to say.
And adding to that, the, the 4H, you know, Mansett booth, they did, did do some major renovations in there too. They had to redo the floor and, you know, obviously, the county inspects, you know, food service stuff. So, so that'll be a new and improved look too when you're at the fair.
But at extensions, if you just want to tell them.
Oh, we have a meeting on June 30th, so.
Okay.
Steve and I will bring it up on, up to 30.
Okay, be getting on the agenda. With that, I'll go ahead, we'll adjourn this meeting, go into special session and then come back later.
Because it always looked back and the muffler was here, the engine noise. We were always looking back.
That's why.
Was worse than this. And I asked, and he said, we see it all the time in farmers. And I said, why? And he told me that.
Isn't that's where the radio was too?
Well, something.
Well, that was usually on the right fender.
Oh.
But then when you turn, you know, you're looking at it. But I was left-handed, so I turned a lot this way. So that's probably why.
Me too.
Okay. We're back in session again. And so we discussed the potential for a property park purchase through a legacy grant. And Commissioner Notch, maybe you'd like to go ahead and explain where we're going to maybe do this?
Okay, well, otherwise, I'll make the motion to approve completing survey implying for our parks and trails legacy grant in relation to this property.
Okay. We have that motion.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer seconds that. And again, just for the public's sake, is we're going to be pursuing, pursuing then legacy grants to purchase this park land. So with, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And the last item we have is adjournment, unless anybody has something else with regards to what's going on? Anything about the county fair?
Mr. Chair.
We already did that.
After adjournment, we're just going to take a few minutes, rearrange the room here and then we'll have your work session on the jail.
Will we work with the work session? Yeah, oh, well, Dr. Williams, did you have anything?
No, sir.
No? Okay. All right. Well, with that, then we'll go ahead and adjourn today's, today's meeting.